To our City Council meeting on Monday, July 14th. Thank you all for dodging the raindrops and joining us this evening. Madam Clerk, if you could call us to order, please. I mean, roll call, please.
I need the mic. Just leave it alone. Ms. Conley?
Yes, here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Shanshiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
And Mayor Hardy.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a motion for Ms. Hardy's participation, please.
Yes. Mayor Hardy, can you identify your remote location and the reason for your participation by electronic means?
I'm somewhere between Richmond, Virginia, like a mile marker, 101 and 95.
And the reason for your remote participation? Personal reasons?
Yeah.
Great. I move that the City Council approve electronic participation by Letty Hardy in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's adopted policy.
Second. Ready? Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, uh, Hiscott?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Letty, thank you for joining us off 95. If you all would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Our agenda is officially adopted. Thank you all. And next up, I'm delighted to welcome our delegate to the state, the Honorable Marcus Simon, who is going to recognize some long-serving residents of the City of Falls Church. Thank you for being here, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shanshiscott and City Council members and Letty from I-95. I know that stretch of road well. I was there this morning. So you could be an hour away or four. There's no way of knowing. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I really enjoyed this night of the year and getting the opportunity to do this and recognize some really dedicated civil servants who've dedicated themselves and their careers to bettering our community, the City of Falls Church, and just really to making lives better for their fellow citizens and their residents. I mean, we live in a time, I think, where some people view civil servants as an expense, as overhead, as a cost to be cut. And it's great to see that here in the City of Falls Church, we really value them for their contributions to the community and the fact that they've dedicated their lives and their careers, again, to service and to making our community a better, more welcoming, in a lot of places, a greener place to live, in some cases, a safer place to live, and to serving their fellow city employees with making sure they have good retirement benefits and things like that. And so we'll hear some of that as we go through the careers and some of the milestones that we've hit with some of these employees. So with that, I think I'll launch right into it. First up, I tried to put these in some sort of an order here when I started. Marshall Jarrett? Marshall, come on up. So let me read the whereas's and then we'll give you a chance for rebuttal if you think you need it. All right. So whereas for 15 years, Marshall Jarrett worked diligently to support employees of the City of Falls Church as an appointee to the City of Falls Church Retirement Board. And whereas Marshall is a well-established civic leader in Falls Church, who previously sort of served on the city's Board of Zoning Appeals for six years, Planning Commission for five years, and Board of Equalization for three years. And whereas Marshall was first appointed by the Falls Church City Council to the Retirement Board in May of 2006 and served in that capacity until April of 2012, was reappointed again in February of 2015, and served until June of 2024, a total of five terms over 15 years. And whereas as a member of the Retirement Board, Marshall Jarrett oversaw the administration of city pension plans, reviewed investment practices, advised the Falls Church City Council on relevant matters. And whereas Marshall earned the admiration of other city officials for his legal acumen and penchant for asking thought-provoking questions. I do that sometimes. I don't know that I always win anybody's admiration for that, but if you did, you're more successful than I've been. Marshall Jarrett worked diligently to ensure regulatory compliance while serving city employees with fairness, sincerity, and the utmost integrity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Marshall Jarrett hereby be commended for his 15 years of service as a member of the City of Falls Church Retirement Board, and be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution. Here it is. Presentation to Marshall as an expression of the House of Delegates' admiration for his outstanding service to the City of Falls Church. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Delegate Simon. Thank you to the Legislature and thank you to the City Council. That's all I have to say.
Very good.
Thank you so much for your service. Would you like to take individual photos or shall we? All together? Great.
Don't leave.
Okay.
Please join us for a photo after we recognize our other civil servants.
All right. And we have online, we have Charlie Collier, is that right? Charlie, you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, very good. So we did a similar resolution for you. If you'll indulge, let me read it for you. It says, whereas Charles Collier, an esteemed employee of the City of Falls Church Police Department, who admirably served the City of Falls Church community as a member of the City of Falls Church Retirement Board, retired from the board in 2024. And whereas Charlie was a long-tenured civilian employee with the City of Falls Church Police Department, where he worked tirelessly to support the department's mission to protect and serve the community. And whereas Charlie Collier served on the City of Falls Church Retirement Board in an employee-elected position over a succession of three-year terms between 2002 and 2024. And whereas as a member of the City of Falls Church Retirement Board, Charles Collier was a steadfast and committed advocate for both current employees and active retirees. And whereas Charles Collier embraced his responsibilities on the City of Falls Church Retirement Board and took great care to ensure benefits were financially sound, established within regulatory compliance, and administered with fairness and equity. And whereas Charles Collier's inquisitive and judicious nature made him an invaluable member of the City of Falls Church's Retirement Board, and his legacy of service will be an inspiration to others for years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Charles Collier hereby be commended for his 22 years of service in the City of Falls Church Retirement Board on the occasion of his retirement. And be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare this copy of the resolution for presentation as an expression of the House of Delegates' admiration for his contributions to Falls Church and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Charlie, congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you and thank God for your time. This is really an honor and I thank you, Simon. I've worked with some fine people all these years. And the city's always been a fine place to live in and serve. So thank you again.
Well, thank you again. Thank you for your service to the City of Falls Church. And we'll miss you for the picture, bud. Glad that you could make it online and be here. Stephen Rao? Devin Rao? How are you? Good to see you. Very good. So this is a little bit longer one. Bear with me. Says whereas Stephen Rao, am I saying your name right?
Yeah.
Okay. An esteemed law enforcement officer and captain of the City of Falls Church Police Department has admirably served the City of Falls, has admirably served the Falls Church community for more than 30 years. And whereas a retired veteran of the United States Army, who are, and the United States Army Reserve, Stephen Rao began his career with the City of Falls Church Police Department in September of 1994 as a member of the Uniformed Patrol Division. Whereas during his time as a patrol officer, Stephen Rao developed and delivered regionally-recognized false identification detection training program for law enforcement, while also receiving numerous commendations for meritorious actions during his assignment. Whereas in August 1999, Stephen was selected as the FCPD's first, first School Resource Officer. It was assigned to what was formerly George Mason High School and George Mason Middle School in Falls Church. Whereas as a School Resource Officer, Stephen played a key role in developing school crisis plans and security programs, protocols, and then implementing the city's original school video surveillance system. And whereas Stephen contributed to his fellow officers' development through countless presentations on the curriculum Class Action, Virginia Teens, and the Law, and topics such as gang reduction, driver education, constitutional law, speed measurement, internet safety, and drug and alcohol awareness. Whereas in January 2014, Stephen was promoted to Lieutenant and assigned as Watch Commander in the Uniform Patrol Division, a position in which he planned and commanded numerous special events. Whereas in August of 2019, then Lieutenant Rao was promoted to Captain, assuming command of the Uniform Patrol Division during his tenure, I'm sorry, assuming command of the Uniform Patrol Division. During his tenure as commander, he implemented the Body worn Camera Program, managed the Video Enforcement Program, and introduced the City of Falls Church government's first electric vehicles. And whereas Stephen stands as one of the steadfast pillars of the FCPD, has contributed greatly to the safety and security of the Falls Church community over the past three decades. Now therefore be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Stephen Rao hereby be commended for his more than 30 years of service with the City of Falls Church Police Department. And be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Stephen Rao as an expression of the House of Delegates' admiration for his contributions to Falls Church and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Stephen, thank you very, very much. What do you want to say?
Just a couple of minutes. Thank you all. I really do appreciate this. It's been an absolute pleasure to work here in the city and to count all of y'all as my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Gary Fuller here? Gary? Oh, there you are. How are you? Good to see you. All right. So whereas Gary Fuller, Acting Planning Director with the City of Falls Church's Department of Community Planning and Economic Development Services, has served the residents of the community for more than 35 years. These numbers keep going up. And whereas as a native of Charlottesville and a graduate of Old Dominion University and the University of Virginia School of Architecture, Gary began his career in local government and public service when he joined Falls Church Community Planning and Economic Development Services as a planner on August 28, 1989. 1989. That was when I was using those identification cards that Stephen Rao was trying to catch me using back then. He was then promoted to Senior Planner in June of the following year. And whereas, over the course of his career, Gary Fuller has served as Planning Director, Deputy Planning Director, Principal Planner, and Acting Department Director for the City of Falls Church, demonstrating strong leadership in directing city planning functions and activities in the community. Whereas as Case Planner for the major mixed-use developments, Gary has processed numerous legislative approvals and entitlements during the past 20 years and provided essential staff support to development and site plan cases. I guess I had a discussion about site plans. We'll talk about that another day. And whereas among his many awards and accolades, Gary Fuller received the 2008 Performance Award for his work on the Falls Church City Center Review Project and was nominated for the Employee of the Year Award in recognition of his exemplary work and consistent support for local community redevelopment objectives, projects, and land use actions. And whereas throughout his career, Gary Fuller has been committed to continuing professional education and excellence, earning certifications for the American Planning Association, the American Institute of Certified Planners, and the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials. And whereas through his extensive knowledge, patience, and professionalism, Gary Fuller has helped countless individuals and businesses, including numerous members of the Falls Church City Council and Falls Church Planning Commission to better understand the city's zoning, planning, and development processes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Gary Fuller is hereby commended for more than 35 years of service as a member of the City of Falls Church's Department of Community Planning and Economic Development Services. That's a mouthful. And be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare this copy of this resolution for presentation to Gary Fuller as an expression of the House of Delegates' admiration for his contributions to the Falls Church community. Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you, Delegate Simon. Thank you. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to work for such a great community, City Falls Church. It really is a community and so, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Juan? That's Juan, I hope it's your last name?
Salguero. Salguero.
Salguero? All right. So whereas Juan Salguero, an esteemed employee with the City of Falls Church, has greatly served the Falls Church community for more than 25 years. And whereas Juan came to the City of Falls Church on September 20, 1999, and was originally hired as a member of the maintenance crew that is now known as the Urban Forestry Department. Whereas Juan demonstrated a passion for working with green spaces, particularly plants and other small native vegetation, and delighted his coworkers with stories and explanations of horticultural practices in his native Guatemala. And whereas more recently, Juan has served as a maintenance worker for the City of Falls Church, primarily at the Falls Church Community Center. Whereas Juan carries out his professional obligations with great pride and dedication and goes beyond the call of duty to help many of the Falls Church Community Center's Spanish-speaking patrons access the center's services and programming. And whereas Juan has been unwaveringly consistent and helpful throughout the several phases of the development of the Falls Church Recreation and Parks Department, supporting the department's success and enhancing its value to the community. Whereas Juan has demonstrated a remarkable commitment to the well-being of Falls Church and its residents throughout his career, earning him the praise and admiration of all Virginians. Now therefore be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Juan Salguero hereby be commended for his 25 years of service with the City of Falls Church. And be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare this copy of this resolution for presentation as an expression of the House of Delegates' high regard for his contribution to Falls Church and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I want to say thanks, God, and thanks, city, for taking care of me and my family. Thanks for the, thanks, thank everybody for taking care of me.
Everybody's here. Okay, all right. Yeah, just one more. And he wasn't able to make it tonight, but Rick Judd, distinguished law enforcement officer who touched countless lives throughout his commitment, through his commitment to excellence, is retired from the Falls Church Police Department after 30 years of service. So we'll make sure that Officer Judd, who's now retired, gets a copy of this resolution as well. So thank you guys very much for the time.
Thank you. If you all would please join us, we'd love to have a photograph with 100 and, over 120 years of service, doing some quick math there. So thank you to each and every one of you for all you've contributed to the city over your decades of service. It's really fun to see Juan was the, at the Community Center when my first child was born and he convinced us to come start taking classes. And 26 years later, he's still working there and making sure everything's shining amongst many other accomplishments of this group. So thank you all.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I might, I couldn't let Steve Rao leave the room before I recognize him for another thing that he did that wasn't even mentioned in the resolution, which was he was invited by the graduating students of my daughter's high school class to give the formal speech and presentation at the graduation. So that gives you some indication of what a great public servant that he's been and how the students that he worked with respected him. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. I'm going to let the chief know that my graduation speech was one of the shorter ones.
Thank you again. And we're going to keep on celebrating by administering some oaths of office to new board and commission members who maybe in 25 years will be celebrating their contributions to the city as well. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Sue Armstrong from the Continuum of Care Board. Between us, how about that? Do you, Sue Armstrong, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Continuum of Care Board according to the best of your abilities? I hope you, God.
So hoping, God, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, may we please receive the summary of written comments?
Yes. These are the written comments received since your last regular meeting. Joseph Shirizzi of 321 Gundry Drive wrote, "To support the proposed ordinance to give public safety aides traffic violation enforcement authority, including review of street camera footage." Steve Page wrote, "With concerns about enacting a solid waste fee." In traffic concerns, Vivian Fulmer of 613 Poplar Drive wrote, "With concerns about pedestrian safety at Broad and West Street." David Beto requested that all intersections on Broad Street be equipped with equivalent traffic safety devices. Kevin Coleman of 1022 Poplar Drive in Fairfax County requested traffic calming on West Street between Broad Street and Route 29. And the following requested that the capital improvements programs focus on bike safety and Vision Zero. David Bloomgarten of 506 Greenwich Street, Pat Conley of 601 Jackson Street, Gillian Economu of 1203 A Lincoln Avenue, and Jan Hill of 302 Bishop's Court. In other items, Stephanie Amoroso wrote about concerns too that led to her contesting a traffic violation, citation received from the school's Speed Zone camera operations. Sean Dakin of 410 South Maple Avenue wrote, "With concerns about the use of artificial turf." Jess Hegenbart provided comments on the South Washington Street bus stop expansion project. And Dave Rifkin of 126 Whittier Circle requested sidewalk repairs on his street. Here, we had two requests, one from school staff and one from one of our boards. Mary Beth Conley, in her position as Director of Strategic Planning and Community Engagement for the Falls Church City Public Schools, wrote with a state legislative support request regarding an update to the Virginia graduation requirements for students who complete other advanced diplomas. And the Historical Commission requested a new design for the city flag.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments this evening?
We do. First up, we have Alex Maricola, followed by Joyce Migdal. And we'll remind speakers that we do have a three-minute limit and you'll see that on the lights I'm going to put up right now.
And I thought, how terrible, that we just, we didn't know that this stuff existed, that no one was up here giving you guys public comments for six months, talking about these, you know, these restrictive zoning conditions, that you guys just didn't know. So I thought I'd come up here and make sure you guys do know that the city's minimum parking requirements are completely out of control because the city requires buildings built in the city to have such large and expansive parking lots. It becomes impractical for people to actually build here. That causes the home prices to go up, and as the president later got to in his speech, or sorry, the former president later got to in his speech, drives people towards more their authoritarian forms of government. I don't like authoritarian forms of government. Perhaps some of you do, and that's why you choose to keep these more restrictive zoning codes on. I don't know. I won't make those assumptions, but maybe some other people will. But I think you guys should look at that more. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next?
Yes, we have Joyce McDowell, followed by Patrick Conley.
My name's Joyce McDowell. I live on West Falls Way. Regarding the development on Broad Street where the developer went and encroached on the sidewalk by a little bit forty-one square inches, concerned, it seemed like everybody was just shrugging that off and saying, oh, well. But if you do that, you're encouraging every other developer to encroach on the sidewalk, and it isn't just somebody trying to pass, it's somebody, you know, with a double wide stroller, and, you know, somebody in a scooter trying to pass on the sidewalk. So if you don't charge them anything for, you know, usurping the sidewalk, the people who pay for it are the walkers and the people on scooters. And you're also, by establishing this precedent, you know, the people that have hedgerows that are constantly encroaching on the sidewalk, where even when the city asks them to cut it back, they'll cut it back a little bit, but not off the sidewalk, not entirely, they're going to say, look, the developer got to do it. I just think something, and my, you know, and this is just me as a layperson, you know, what would a willing buyer pay to an unwilling seller because we really weren't willing to sell even the forty-one square inches of the sidewalk? So charge them maybe double for the forty-one square inches for whatever the rate is for, you know, property there, and then every year, charge double the property tax on just that forty-one square inches, probably not enough to make a difference, but something, some concession, because you really don't want to encourage people to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Conley, followed by Robin Ramey.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Pat Conley of the Falls Church Forward, and even though we're in the heat of summer, I'm here to prepare for fall and advocate for the Leave the Leaves Initiative, a simple yet impactful way to support our environment, reduce emissions, and save costs. Leaving leaves on your property benefits the environment by providing a habitat for pollinators like bees and butterflies, enriching soils as the leaves decompose. It reduces emissions from leaf blowers and vacuum trucks, which contribute to air pollution. Financially, it cuts costs for homeowners in the city by eliminating the need for leaf collection and disposal, potentially saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. There are easy methods to manage leaves sustainably. Mulch mowing, shreds leaves into lawns, returning nutrients to soil. Raking leaves into garden beds acts as natural mulch, suppressing weeds, retaining moisture, and allowing places for pollinators to overwinter. Composting leaves creates rich soil amendments for gardens. These methods are practical, easy to implement, and eco-friendly. In my yard with many mature trees, last fall, I didn't send a single leaf to the curb. I mulch mowed most of the leaves and raked some into garden beds where they protected plants and supported pollinators. It was even easier than raking them to the curb for the vacuum. Last year, Falls Church Forward launched a campaign to encourage residents to adopt the practice. We created a website with information and resources, distributed flyers to homes in the city, and placed about sixty yard signs around town. We hosted an educational event with a master gardener, helping residents to adopt these practices. These efforts contributed to a reduction of collected leaves by over four hundred tons from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. This year, we're expanding with more yard signs, an updated website, and continued assistance for residents. We're planning for a booth at the Falls, Falls, Fall Festival and exploring presence at the farmer's market to spread the word. As council members and city staff, you can support too. I encourage the city to support this initiative by promoting Leave the Leaves through city communications, such as newsletters and social media. We're organizing the city leaf collection website to feature Leave the Leaves as the primary option instead of hiding it at the bottom of the website, adopting leaf retention practices in city parks and on government properties, and issuing a proclamation in October to officially recognize October as Leave the Leaves Month. By embracing Leave the Leaves, Falls Church can improve our environment, reduce emissions, and save resources while fostering a community that values sustainability. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Ramey, followed by Nadine Martinez.
Good evening, council. I'm Robin Ramey, and I am also here tonight to speak on the Leave the Leaves Initiative. Leaving leaves on our properties supports a healthier environment. As leaves decompose, they enrich soil, retain moisture, and provide habitat for pollinators like butterflies and bees, which boosts our biodiversity. This practice is endorsed by the National Wildlife Federation, the USDA, and the Xerxes Society, which recognizes its role in sustainable landscaping. By keeping leaves in our yards, we nurture, we nourish ecosystems that support wildlife and strengthen our community's green spaces, which we all love so much. This approach also reduces emissions, so traditional leaf collection relies on gas-powered blowers, vacuums, and trucks, which release carbon dioxide and other pollutants. Leaving the leaves eliminates these, cutting our carbon footprint, and improving air quality for Falls Church. Additionally, it also saves money. With increased adoption of leaving the leaves, the city can reduce expenses on collection and disposal, which amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. These savings can be redirected to other community priorities, of which we have many. You can leave leaves by mulch mowing, raking them into your garden beds, or composting. These are all simple steps that can have some big impacts. Imagine Falls Church leading the way with this eco-friendly practice. So I urge the council to promote the Leave the Leaves campaign through city communications and some of the other ways Pat's mentioned, and also adopting it in our parks. Let's make Falls Church a model of sustainability. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Nadine Martinez?
Thanks, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and residents. My name's Nadine Martinez, and I'm here to advocate for the Leave the Leaves Initiative, a practical step that delivers environmental emissions and cost-saving benefits for Falls Church. Leaving the leaves on our properties strengthens our environment. As leaves decompose, they enrich the soil, retain moisture, and provide critical habitat for pollinators like butterflies and bees, enhancing biodiversity. The National Wildlife Federation, USDA, and Xerxes Society champion this practice for its role in sustainable landscaping, helping our yards and green spaces thrive naturally. This approach also reduces emissions. Traditional leaf collection relies on gas-powered blowers and trucks, which releases carbon dioxide and pollutants. By keeping leaves in our yards, we are cutting our carbon footprint and improving air quality across Falls Church. Financially, Leave the Leaves saves money. The city spends hundreds of thousands of dollars annually on leaf collection, fuel, and disposal. By adopting this initiative, we can redirect these funds to other public priorities. Simple methods make it easy. Mulch mowing returns nutrients to lawns, raking leaves into garden beds suppresses weeds, and composting creates rich soil amendments. These practices are low effort and high impact. Like Robin and Pat, I urge the council to continue promoting Leave the Leaves through the city communications and adopting it in our parks. Let's make Falls Church a leader in sustainability, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars while protecting our environment and air quality. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our final speaker to sign up this evening.
Thank you to everybody who wrote in to council, sharing your insights, and to those who spoke here this evening. Let's move on to our report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Sean Sitscott. I've got a couple of things to report on tonight. We also have two of the items in the manager's report listed on the agenda, but before we get to those, if I could just first make an introduction of our new planning director, Matt Matusek, who is here in the council chambers tonight. He'll, is here in support of staff with the agenda items tonight, but I wanted just to take the opportunity, Mr. Matusek, welcome to the City of Falls Church. As I think everybody on council knows, Mr. Matusek joins us from Arlington County, where he worked for seventeen years, handling very complex land use cases and handling very complex long-range planning initiatives, including the Columbia Pike Corridor, the National Landing Area, the Barcroft Land Use Analysis, Pentagon City Sector Plan, and also working on the land use cases associated with Amazon's headquarters, HQ Two. And speaking with Matt's colleagues with the county, some of the very common comments that we heard is about his deep knowledge and competence in these areas, his innovative thinking, and also his wicked sense of humor, so watch out. But Matt, we're really looking forward to working with you, and we're really glad you're here tonight, and I'd like to invite you, maybe just say a word or two to the city council as introduction as well.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for that warm welcome. It's been great to slowly get to know everybody. Today is actually technically my first day, but I am looking forward to collaborating, looking for practical solutions with everybody, and just trying to learn as much as I can from Gary Fuller, all thirty-five years of experience. Interesting note, I actually immigrated to the country from Poland the same year he started with Falls Church.
That's interesting.
So something to, you know, have in common, I guess. But yeah, I'm looking forward to just kind of getting to know all the stakeholders, starting to meet with planning commissioners, different staff, different departments, and yeah, looking forward to it. Thank you.
On behalf of council, we welcome you to the City of Falls Church, and we're so glad you're here. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
And I also want to thank Gary Fuller, who's served as our interim director since about the Thanksgiving timeframe, and has led the team to do great things over this interim period. So Gary, a big thank you to you and everything you do for the city.
Well done.
Just a few additional announcements. The finance director position is open for recruitment. That was posted some time ago. The application deadline for priority review ended on July, on Sunday, and so we're reviewing applications now, and the application window as a whole is open until July twenty-fifth. And so I encourage people to apply for that, and this, also want to thank Melissa Ryman, our longtime deputy finance director, who is serving as her interim finance director and doing a wonderful job. So thank you, Melissa. The Solid Waste Task Force, their final meeting is Monday, July twenty-first. They're looking at the fee structure for how we finance our solid waste services. They're looking at if we move to a fee, there are some mechanisms for providing relief for certain members of our community, including seniors. They're looking at implementing our compost program, a third bin for compost, working through some of the logistical issues with billing if we were to move to a fee, and our communications campaign. We plan to come to the city council on August fourteenth to present a set of recommendations, and we'll have some code amendments for the council to consider at the same time at that August fourth meeting. If there is a move to a fee, there would also be an accompanying reduction in the real estate tax rate, and we'll have an ordinance prepared for the city council for your consideration on that on August fourth as well. So I wanted to just note the progress and really thank the task force members. I think they've been doing really good work together. That was the intent of forming that group, to work through issues with community members, working with staff, so we could have a good wide range of perspectives as we bring recommendations to the city council. Two construction notices, two major transportation projects, including the Maple and Annandale Roundabout and the North Washington Street and Columbia Intersection Improvements. Both contractors have been given the notice to proceed, and we anticipate that you'll start to see mobilization at the end of July and see visible construction commencing on both of these projects in the month of August. So I wanted the community to be aware of that. We'll have essentially a communications campaign for the traveling public and for the public in general about those projects as we go forward. The last thing I'd like to just speak of is the series of rainstorms that we've been having. We had flash flooding throughout the capital region yesterday and again today. It's forecast for the rest of this week, and so with this cycle, every time we have one of these flash flood warnings, city crews are on alert to address flooding or to dress down trees. So I want to thank our public safety staff and our public work staff for their work during these big events, and also to encourage homeowners to take actions to protect your own property, whether it's, you know, building up around window wells or stairwells that enter into your basements that are having positive drainage away from your house. When you have these big, heavy rains, it's always an opportunity to learn about how the water behaves in these flash flood events, and encourage all property owners to take actions to protect against damage from flooding. So those are a couple of introductory comments, and now it's my pleasure to ask Cindy Mester to come forward, and she's going to introduce Lei Nguyen, who is our Vietnamese Community Outreach Specialist, and then after her presentation and that introduction, we'll hear from Chief Fard, and he'll deliver the twenty twenty-four annual police report. Cindy?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. I'm pleased to be able to... There we go. Introduce Lei Nguyen, who has joined the City of Falls Church as our Vietnamese Outreach Specialist. This is day three, the beginning of week two, and so we're very excited to welcome him to the City of Falls Church as a refresher for the community. This is a direct outcome of the East End Small Area Plan, when we were working with the Vietnamese community and Eden Center businesses in particular, to address cultural engagement and communication coordination, and that effort and recommendation for the Vietnamese Outreach Specialist came directly from the Viet Place Collective, and I'm pleased to say we have online and in the audience representation. Quinn is here from Viet Place Collective in support of this position, and we're looking forward to getting it kicked off. We have great experience joining us with being a strong journalist, a lot of experience working with the community, having come from Vietnam, native speaker of Vietnamese and also English and French, and so we're very pleased to have Lei on board. I've been keeping him busy with meetings. I think we're about up to fifteen because he is meeting with every department, community group to really get off and running for this pilot project, since we only have six months and ten hours a week. And with that, Lei, welcome, and I'll give you a chance to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you, Cindy. It's my great honor and pleasure to be here today in front of the great panel of one of the most important figures in the City of Falls Church, and my name is Lei Nguyen, and I have started last week as a community outreach worker. It's a pretty new position. We don't have it before, so everything is new for me. I'm still in the process of learning and getting myself up to speed. You know, I used to be a citizen... This is day three, the beginning of week two, and so we're very excited to welcome him to the city of Falls Church as a refresher for the community. This is a direct outcome of the East End Small Area Plan, when we were working with the Vietnamese community and Eden Center businesses in particular, to address cultural engagement and communication coordination. And that effort and recommendation for the Vietnamese Outreach Specialist came directly from the Viet Place Collective. And I'm pleased to say we have online and in the audience representation. Quinn is here from Viet Place Collective in support of this position, and we're looking forward to getting it kicked off. We have great experience joining us with being a strong journalist, a lot of experience working with the community, having come from Vietnam, native speaker of Vietnamese and also English and French. And so we're very pleased to have Lei on board. I've been keeping him busy with meetings. I think we're about up to 15 because he is meeting with every department, community group to really get off and running for this pilot project, since we only have six months and 10 hours a week. And with that, Lei, welcome. And I'll give you a chance to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you, Cindy. It's my great honor and pleasure to be here today in front of the right panel of one of the most important figures in the city of Falls Church. And my name is Lei Nguyen, and I started last week as a community outreach worker. It's a pretty new position. We don't have it before, so everything is new for me. I'm still in the process of learning and getting myself up to speed. You know, I used to be a citizen of Falls Church, and I lived here for three years, and I always want to contribute to the growth of the city and the well-being of its residents. And I think this is a great chance for me to do that. I believe that I can tap into my heritage with the deep roots in the Vietnamese cultures, my education in the U.S., and my long experience as a career journalist, to serve as a bridge between the city of Falls Church and the local Vietnamese communities. So I'm looking forward. I wish to have your support on the long way, so that I can fulfill my responsibility, and thank you.
Well, welcome to Falls Church, and thank you so much for joining us. This has been a long-awaited addition to the city, and to the extent we can be helpful to you in your work, please let us know on council as well. Thank you.
And the headline presentation tonight during the manager's report is Chief Fard will present the 2024 Annual Report from the Police Department. And I encourage everybody in the community to read this report. It is packed with information about trends that are happening, statistics, but also a lot of the news from the department about things that we're undertaking in terms of how we grow and how we evolve as a department. And I just really want to take the opportunity also to thank Chief Fard. Chief Fard is, has really been moving at top speed with his leadership of this department and the, over a year and a half that he's been with the city. And when we recruited for a police department, I met with so many of our police officers, and what they asked for was a leader of the department that could bring best practices to the department, could bring training to the department. And even as we were evolving and changing as a department, because I think there was a lot of appetite and eagerness for that, they were really eager to have a police chief that would be accessible to them, so that as they were working through change, they could go in, open, you know, talk with the chief, understand directions that were going on in a department, and be able to discuss it with the chief one-on-one. And Chief Fard does all of these things, and so I'm just really proud for the whole department that we're moving in such a positive direction together with your leadership. So Chief Fard, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, Mayor Hardy, who I know is online, Vice Mayor Hiscott, members of council, city staff, and members of the Falls Church community. Thank you again, once again, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. For those in the community that may be watching or here, my name is Ram Fard. As the city manager said, I'm the city police chief and the public safety director. You know, last year, we began the tradition of presenting the police department's annual report to the community at a council meeting. Tonight, I'm honored to continue this practice, and will present the Falls Church Police Department's annual report for calendar year 2024, my first year as your police chief. I'll be happy to answer your questions at the end of my presentation. As you're aware, again, I assumed my role in January of 2024, and since that time, I've witnessed firsthand extraordinary dedication, professionalism, and integrity of our public safety team. Some of them that came here tonight to ask my backup here and watch our presentation, thank you guys for being here. I'm so proud to lead this department as we work to protect and serve our flourishing and diverse city. The police department's work is guided by our core values of emphasizing the sanctity of life, fairness, and community trust. These core values drive our actions and decisions, and I hope this report demonstrates those priorities for the community. This report is more than a collection of statistics. It's a reflection of our ongoing commitment to safety, transparency, and collaboration with all members of our community. Sensitive primary objective of our annual report is to report crime data. I want to start there. As I did last year, I once again note that, starting with our 2023 annual report, we updated our crime data reporting by using the FBI's National Incident-Based Reporting System, known as NIBR, which provides a more detailed and transparent account of local crime data. Last year, I provided a detailed explanation of the NIBR's reporting, which I won't repeat, but they're once again outlined within the report, starting on page five. And we'll just point out that NIBR classifies crimes into two primary categories. Those categories are Group A and Group B offenses. So let's start with Group A offenses, and these are major incidents or offenses like homicides, assaults, burglary, a lot of other offenses that have a direct impact on victims in our communities. These offenses are reported with detailed information, covering up to 52 types of offenses, which are divided into three subcategories: crimes against persons, crimes against properties, and crimes against society. So for calendar year 2024, the city experienced a 7% reduction in Group A offenses from 551 offenses in 2023 to 511 offenses in 2024. That means fewer serious crimes affecting our residents, and that progress is meaningful. In the crimes against persons subcategory, we saw a slight increase from 90 to 105 offenses, due mostly to an increase in number of misdemeanors, simple assaults, and not violent crimes. While we are troubled by any crimes against persons, the city's violent crimes continue to trend downward, and our response remains swift and thorough, as seen in cases like the Swift arrest and the high-profile stabbing incident involving a family pet named Lucy early last year. The reduction in Group A offenses also noted, and most notably in crimes against properties, where we saw a 14% reduction from 444 offenses in 2023 to 380 last year. Property crimes, including thefts, vandalism, has been a concern, and this reduction shows the impact of proactive policing and community vigilance. While Group A offenses are more serious offenses, Group B offenses generally are less severe and include crimes such as loitering, disorderly conduct, and minor property crimes. The Virginia State Police only gathers data on those Group B offenses that result in an arrest. And arrests for Group B offenses rose slightly from 210 to 215. While that increase is modest, it reflects ongoing efforts to address quality-of-life concerns throughout our community. So overall, I can report that crime in Falls Church is down and safety is up. Aside from crime, it's also important to highlight the work of the dedicated officers, some of who I pointed out here, who work tirelessly each day in keeping us safe by patrolling our neighborhoods and responding to service calls. Last year, these officers fielded nearly 31,000 calls for service, which includes both the calls officers initiate themselves and those we receive from the community. Although responding to calls and investigating crimes that have already occurred is a large part of our operations, it's also essential for the police and the community to partner to prevent crime from occurring in the first place. The men and women of the Falls Church Police Department place a high priority on community partnership because it's essential to building trust, enhancing public safety, and fostering accountability. This cooperation leads to better communication, increases cultural understanding, and proactive crime prevention. The trust we have with our community encourages people to report crimes. It encourages them to support our investigations and follow the law, which ultimately makes our city safer and more resilient. Some examples I'd like to point out of our community partnership efforts you'll see in our annual report is our exceptional School Resource Officers Program, which you heard about earlier with Captain Rao, which keeps, helps keep our schools, their staff, and students safe. Another example of our programs is the Regional Gun Buyback Program that we co-hosted with Arlington County, resulting in a safe disposal of 134 firearms, which was widely attended and helped prevent potential violence. We also held the National Night Out event last August, and we'll continue to host that event annually on the first Tuesday of every August. A quick plug for this year, it's coming up, Tuesday, August 5th in Cherry Hill Park from 6 to 8. Hope to see everyone there. And also thanks to council's efforts and support, the city is now a member of the Arlington County's Community Criminal Justice Board to engage with the community in matters affecting the criminal justice system and programs. And I would be remiss if I didn't note that in next year's report, you'll read all about the successes of our newly-launched Community Police Academy, what we held this spring. Another topic the police department recognizes as an important traffic safety issue for our community is our traffic safety program and the safety of our road users. During my first year, we made traffic safety a priority for the police department, so that we're doing our part in keeping our roadways safe for all users. By enforcing traffic laws, we help prevent crashes, injuries, and fatalities caused by speeders, impaired drivers, distracted drivers, and other dangerous behaviors. Our visible presence deters reckless driving and encourages responsible behavior. By prioritizing traffic safety, we're protecting all road users and are contributing to a safer community. In 2024, the prioritization of traffic safety goals resulted in a 16% increase in number of traffic stops performed by our officers over the previous year, while reducing the number of traffic crashes by 29%. Since resources are finite and officers can't be in all places at once, automated traffic enforcement programs supplement officers' enforcement efforts. In 2024, we launched a school zone speed safety program, installing automated speed cameras on West Broad Street. Aside from enforcement, the police department focuses on educating the community around traffic safety, and much effort is expended to provide safety tips to the road users. An example is a distracted driving simulator present annually at the Meridian High School to help educate teen drivers on the dangers of distracted driving. A new initiative for 2024 is the police department's Child Safety Seat Check Program, where we now have officers certified to help parents with insulation and proper inspection of child safety seats. So turning our attention inward to our most valued assets, our people, one of my top priorities during my first year was strengthening professional development. In 2024, thanks to council's support, we created a professional development manager position, and staff completed over 4,350 hours of training. This included introduced new leadership training programs such as First Line Leadership Course, the Supervisory Liability Course, the IUCEP's Women's Leadership Institute, annual ethics training, and we've expanded de-escalation training to our non-sworn professional staff. These efforts have continued and will be expanded this year and continuing. In all, 2024 was a year of miserable progress and renewed partnership. Our reductions in crime, improved traffic safety programs, expanded training, innovative outreach programs are all signs of a department moving forward with purpose, compassion, and resolve. So to council, city leadership, and residents, on behalf of my team, thank you for your continued support and trust. Together, we are shaping a safer, stronger Falls Church. It's a privilege to serve as your chief of police, and welcome your questions, and look forward to continuing our shared mission of safety and community. Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for that really thorough, data-driven report. We really appreciate it. I'm sure there are many accolades that council and other staff members want to pass on to you and to all of your officers here and your entire department. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you to everybody and your staff for all the hard work to make these improvements that you're noting. I'm sure that there are many questions that my council colleagues would like to ask as well, to just further elaborate on some of the data you've provided. So, Justine, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much. As Wyatt mentioned, that you've been accessible to officers, you've also been incredibly accessible to the community, and I think we all recognize that and really appreciate that, and just being a part and showing up, whether it's National Night Out, or the accreditation, excuse me, or the event that you held to help people understand what goes into police training. I had some questions from the report. One of the things that I really appreciated about this report is the amount of data that you included, and there is so much good data, and this is a council that loves data. I ended up trying to go back to 2019 to figure out how things had progressed since then. But it's actually kind of hard to compare stats, because a lot of the stats that you included were from, I think it was called Beyond 2020, and so it starts in 2020, so we don't really have a good comparison to 2019. And so I'm putting you on the spot here a little bit, and maybe you don't know, and that's totally okay. In a 2019 report, it talks about type 1 and type 2 offenses. Do you happen to know if those line up with Group A and Group B offenses?
They do not.
They do not? Okay.
Yeah, because this was the uniform crime reporting that the FBI used to use.
Okay.
Where Part 1 was very linear, was very singular in types of offenses, didn't really expand on offenses. So NIBR is a newer, much better way of reporting crime. It breaks down into those categories, and those categories really goes into details. It's not just your six different offenses that were in Part 1 crimes that you may have seen. It goes in a lot more detail. So there is an explanation of that in our 2023 report.
Okay.
Of why we changed from UCR to NIBR. So hopefully that'll give you a little bit of background, but there is really no good way to match them up, unless you take single-type offenses.
Gotcha. Okay, so looking back to 2019 numbers and trying to compare them to 2024 numbers as apples to oranges, or there's no good way of doing it specifically?
If you group them, yes. But if you look at single-type offenses, such as homicide, aggravated assaults, robberies, burglaries, if you look at those offenses singularly, you'll be able to compare them over time, but not as a group, because the grouping changed.
Gotcha. So even if I were to total type 1 and type 2, as well as Group A and Group B, would that give an overall sense, or no, not even? Okay.
No, because they've expanded some crimes. You know, for example, electronic crimes, like fraud, there's been so many different advancements on the criminal element of, you know, the trends. So there's been some changes because of that that may have not been present five, 10 years ago.
Okay, that's helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me know. Other things, the accreditation process, you do talk about that in the document. I know that was something that was on council's mind a lot in the past few years. Could you talk a little bit about exactly where we are and how that's been advancing?
Sure. So in November of last year, 2024, we officially signed on with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, CLIA for short. It's a gold standard credentialing body nationally, and the initiation process itself was a very extensive application process with requirements such as onboarding, the mandated digital document management system that we use, along with submission of extensive data on our locality and our agency. So that accreditation process is ongoing. It's going to ensure that our agency demonstrates compliance with the CLIA standards and provides the best practices related to life, healthy, health, and safety procedures in our agency. So these are national standards. They're considered foundational for contemporary law enforcement agency, and the CLIA program that we chose, it provides a framework for addressing, you know, high-risk issues within a modern era that we see these days. And it ensures really our officers are prepared to meet basic community services and those expectations and prepared to manage critical events. So those standards I mentioned, there's 170-plus individual standards that are peppered out through our policy. So as we go through this process, there's extensive work of updating our general order manual, which is about 150-plus different individual general orders, to incorporate those CLIA standards, the 170 that I talked about. And, you know, there's a lot of them already in there, but there may be some that aren't in there. So thus far, our staff, since we started the process late last year, we've written and published 21 individual general orders. There's extensive work. We're putting them in new templates, you know, getting them through a very thorough review process, and we're currently working on another dozen. So the updating of policies is an ongoing process of the, you know, getting to federal and state and local legislation, case laws updated to standards, industry best practices, changes in CLIA standards. So this is going to be a three-year process. When we get to the end of that three-year process, we'll have an onsite evaluation by outside assessors. There'll be community engagement. There'll be community feedback about how this police department is doing, and at that point, we'll find out if we get a credit or not. And I'm betting that we will.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other thing in your report that I flagged was the sharp increase in FOIA requests. Could you talk a little bit about this trend? Do you see this flatlining, or is this just something that's gonna, are you concerned that this is going to keep growing? that this is going to keep growing?
I am concerned because the state legislator, for good reasons, expands the laws to give the public access to public information. That's the good side. The challenging side internally is we're going to need staff to meet that challenge. So for example, in 2024, the state legislature removed the Virginia citizenship requirement for victims to request and receive records under FOIA. We can all agree that's a good thing, but that has doubled our workload. That's one of the reasons why it's... So we went from 60 requests in 2023 to 120. And the same staff members that we have, meeting our CLIA requirements, our general orders, our PIO responsibilities, all of our other state and federal reporting requirements, they're the same staff that are doing the FOIA. So I am concerned, but we're monitoring it, and certainly will come to council if we think we need the personnel resources to overcome those challenges.
Have you noticed, or can you even speak to 2025? Has 2025 been even higher?
I'd have to get back to you, but I do know that our body-worn camera images also contribute to those FOIA requests because most of our data requests are for civil cases where folks may be involved in a civil proceeding, and there is evidence from a body-worn camera image, and they want that data to use for this whole proceeding. So I don't have any 2025 data, but I would bet it's probably consistent with 24 and if not more. But if you want that data, I can get it for you.
I guess only bring it to us if you're concerned about the level of...
Fair enough.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Madam, may I comment on the FOIA question?
Yes.
I am the FOIA officer for the city, and so the police FOIAs do also run through my office. The police department deals with gathering the data, and most of the time, I'll forward the data to the requesters. But as far as the question, I think we are looking like we're on track for this about the same amount from last year. Seems to be pretty steady, if not a little bit increased from last year.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Ms. Downs?
Thank you. Chief Fard, thank you so much for this report. I think I can say, I think you're the first annual report that received applause, so... And it was, I really, really enjoyed reading this report. It's, you know, it's great news, really. I wanted to, I have a couple of comments, a couple of questions. First, as a former school board chair, I have to do a shout-out for our school resource officers. I just can't, and we've got one in the audience here. Yes, and I think they always called you "shook." Is that, they, yeah, because they couldn't pronounce your last name. Yeah. But he, but he would be on the football field with the students throwing a football. You know, so much of school resource officers is that, that the officers are approachable and that it's just another person that, one of our students who might need just a trusted, you know, adult that they can go to. And so it just, and I think it goes to what you try to do, Chief Fard, is trying to build that connection between officers and the community. And it really starts with our students and seeing the police as someone who's there to, that they're there to help. So I can't say enough, and thank you for that. One question I had, and again, I echo Ms. Underhill's comments, and I'm sure everyone up here will be saying this, that we just so appreciate the level of professionalism that you've brought and really looking at, you know, accreditations, best practices, really just heightening the professionalism of our police force. In terms of best practices, is there a sort of a best practice in terms of a ratio officer per number of community members?
Yeah, so, no, thank you for that question. The staffing model that's recommended by both ICMA and IACP International Associate Chiefs of Police and International City Managers Association is to base your patrol, I mean, your police warrant staffing on our workload, not on the population numbers. Right? So that is something that, I think I spoke to council a couple of months ago at a work session. I mentioned that we're going to bring in an outside expert entity to assess our workload, look at our shift relief factors, determine what the community wants in terms of service, and then determine what our staffing numbers need to be. Our current staffing model is what's referred to as a minimum staffing model. A long time ago, before my time, someone before me decided what that would be, and regardless of what the workload is at any given hour in a 24-hour period, that knows numbers of minimum staffing stays the same. So we want to get our staffing level to a point where it's based on our workload. So that's what I'm going to be working towards to determine what the workload-based staffing needs are for the City of Falls Church. There will be a dialogue with the community about what their expectations are. It needs to be a partnership, as I said in my presentation. So that's going to be what I'm going to be working towards.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just a comment, the community police academy was fantastic. You know, I have some friends who participate in that. I know our own city manager participated in it, and I went to the graduation, which was a lot of fun. And so thank you again. I think that's just, I know that's a lot of time and effort on the part of you and your staff, but I think it just is, does great to build bridges. I, I was, so just a couple of stats. I won't go quite as missing Underhill went back to 2019. I won't go to that, but I will, I really liked to see the big increase in the traffic stops. I think there were an enormous increase in traffic stops, which I think is great because one of the things when I campaigned in the fall for the special election, a lot of talk was, you know, we have a lot more people in the city, more traffic, that sort of thing. So I think just to show that you all are really on top of that is terrific. Love the professional development additions. That's fantastic. I was really surprised by the dispatch calls that we had, about 700 less. And I think, do you think that's just because we're a little bit more on top of everything in the city, so we've had less calls coming in? I think it was 700 less between 2024 and 2023, if I have that number right.
So we're on page 18?
Yeah.
You're talking about emergency calls, non-emergency call?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have it in front of me. Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, there was about 300 less in emergency calls. Obviously, you know, that's, that's not really, I don't know what that would be reason for it. The non-emergency calls, you know, sometimes that's weighed by different reasons that I don't really, can speculate on.
Right, right.
But it's not necessarily consistent with our calls for service because if you notice, our calls for service are actually a little bit different, a little bit higher in 2024 than they were in 23.
Right.
So yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. It's interesting. I think having this sort of, as we all do up here, you know, our population's increasing. So I think it's just interesting when we see dips in some things because, you know, it just shows the great work that you all are doing. I think that, that you always, I would always think that with the population increasing, we're going to see all of our numbers, but, but that's, that's good. That's good.
Not necessarily. Like I said, that's why that modeling on population is not a good model to use because it's really about workload. And, you know, what this, these figures on page 18 doesn't capture is this is such a small city, it's a great city, it's a walkable city. So what's not here is the walk-ins, right? We'll get a lot of times where people will just walk in through our front doors and want to talk to an officer or report something.
Right.
But yeah, certainly the population numbers are not indicative of our workload. It's really driven by what the community's needs are as opposed to a simple figure of how many people live in the city.
Great. That's, that's great, Candace. And then two quick other things. I know my colleagues have some things they want to ask and say.
Sure.
For the speed camera at St. James School, that is, so it is, it's only activated when the lights are flashing. Is that correct?
Well, it's only active during the times that we have chosen. We've had some challenges with the lights.
Uh huh, okay.
We're walking through those.
Okay.
But their, their cameras are not aligned with the lights. They're two separate systems.
Oh, okay.
So the times, the time periods are set. They're on our website. I don't have them right on top of my head. But it's during the morning, school hours, during the afternoon, school hours. So we've had some issues with the lights continuing to be on even after those hours, but the cameras are not going when those, they're not based on those lights. They're based on this programmed hours.
Okay. So Mr. Shields, that might be something we could talk about, you know, maybe a communications piece about, because I think some people have gotten tickets when the lights haven't been flat. I just, I think there's, I didn't realize that those two things were not necessarily connected.
Tickets are only issued when the lights are working.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So sometimes, like this summer, the school ended, and the lights were still operational. So we got on top of that. I think they should be off now.
Okay.
But note, so when an officer, so an officer has to verify the citation, as much as the name is automated as in the, in the system, there is a requirement after the, a photo is taken of a potential violation, and a sworn law enforcement officer has to validate that citation. And one of the parts of that validation is in the image, they have to see the light.
I gotcha.
And it has to be within those periods.
Oh, okay.
And if those, just, there's a lot of other things also, but for those two things that we're, since we're talking about it, if those things are not present, the officer's not going to validate the citation.
Okay. That's terrific. That's really helpful information. And then my last piece is, tonight, we are, we have before us to increase the authority of the public safety aides, and we actually had someone write in about this. Would public safety aides, would that be something, and you were talking about FOIA and, you know, having to look through footage of body camera sorts of things, would that be something that public safety aides could help with?
Unfortunately not. We did, we're going to respond back to that inquiry today that we received. So by state code, only law enforcement officers are able to validate those citations, as I was just explaining.
Got it.
So the city does not have the authority to put that in city code because that's driven by state law, and by state law, it has to be a law enforcement officer.
Okay.
Can I jump in on that question?
Yes, please. And I'm all finished. Thank you very much, Chief.
On the state law, from your perspective as the chief, is there a reason why, or is there anything about the job that you think require, you personally know that requires an officer versus a civilian doing that? Like, just thinking about our legislative body and whether that's something we lobby the state for, the ability to have civilians assess the...
I would say that needs to stay as a law enforcement officer, or this year, I believe, legislation added retired law enforcement officers to code because issuing the citations is essentially enforcing the traffic legislations in the state code book. And the experience of actually conducting traffic stops, enforcing traffic laws, understanding the elements that's required to validate that citation, that takes law enforcement experience. So I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable of having non-law enforcement enforcing those because there is a lot riding with our trust with the community on those automated traffic programs, and we want to make sure we get it right. So having that training and certification and background to do it right is really valuable, in my view.
Thank you for answering that and letting me jump in on that one. So that was your last question for now. Ms. Flynn?
Hi, I'll be quick. My colleagues here have already asked a lot of questions, so thank you again for the report. It's always very comprehensive, and as Ms. Underhill said, nice to have the data to go along with sort of the years retrospective about everything that the department has been doing. And thank you again and your staff for always sort of leading with integrity and adhering to our sort of shared community values, especially in a sort of increasingly fraught policing environment where we know the work that you're doing is difficult and that we, you know, appreciate that it's demanding, but also really rewarding, and that you're doing it sort of with community-based policing models sort of at the forefront of your approach. I think beyond that, I had a question on the administrative investigations, which I sort of hesitated to bring up, but then in sort of, you know, reflecting on it, sort of felt like it was probably a good indication of the sort of culture of accountability and transparency that you've established in the department, sort of looking at use-of-force cases and that you had, you know, 18 use-of-force incidents, all of which were exonerated as within policy guidelines and no disciplinary action was needed, and that there were 18 administrative investigations, of which nine were internally reported and nine reported externally, and that not all of those were exonerated, which in my mind, you know, was a positive thing that, you know, you sort of have accountability, not only with the community, but that your staff sort of feel accountable to one another and to the department as a whole, and that they know that if they're coming forward, that, you know, that the things that you're saying, and it's not just, you know, paying sort of lip service to training and expectations and best practices, but that you're really seeing those expectations, you know, enforced, right? And affecting sort of, you know, when people are gonna receive kind of additional, what would you say, kind of oversight, right? Where warranted. And so I just wanted to thank you for that and including the data and just share, you know, my sort of takeaways in looking at that page in particular.
Thank you for bringing that up. I figured the OPR data would come up, so I saved it for the questions instead of including in my presentation. But I do want to say that we did change our use-of-force reporting to individual incidents of use-of-force as opposed to cases. So those 18 use-of-forces were 17 incidents. On one incident, two officers used where, used force, where in years past, we didn't count individual use-of-forces, we counted incidents. So they give you a much more thorough view of actual instances of uses of force as opposed to individual incidents. And we did update our policies for both administrative investigations, disciplinary actions and appeals, and use-of-force, and they are on our website for everybody to review. And you'll notice on page 15, on the bottom of that page in the last bullet, we also rolled out a lot of training to teach our officers how to document use-of-force to protect the community themselves and the city, and also separate training just for the supervisors who review those reports to understand how to judge use-of-force. And I'll leave it there, but there's been a lot more training to make sure that those investigations are done thoroughly and they withstand any outside scrutiny that comment upons us. So thank you for pointing that out.
Ms. Connolly? And we'll go to Mr. Snyder, then Ms. Hardy.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Chief Fard. I will keep mine brief because almost all the things I was going to say have already been covered, but that last quote that is up there, "The police are the people and the people are the police," I think that is so strong and so, such a good example of your attitude towards serving the City of Falls Church as well as the members of your staff. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Connolly.
Thanks a lot. First of all, great bottom line in this report. Traffic stops up, traffic crashes down, and overall reduction in crime. Well, a lot of the commendation goes to you, Chief. I think it goes to each and every one of the officers because the, our community really rests on each and every interaction with each and every officer. And credit goes to you certainly as the leader, but to each and every one of our officers. So my personal thank you for the great job that you do for, for our community. Second point I want to make is in discussions with legislators and others on increasing electronic enforcement and trying to make the case in Richmond, good data on the electronic enforcement that were permitted is going to be absolutely essential. So we'll probably be asking you for data, not only on the red light running cameras, but especially on the school zone, not from the standpoint of finance, but from the standpoint of the kinds of violations that we're getting. Do you have a number on that so far at all on the, on the school zone?
Sure.
Speeding?
Yeah, so we started our program in, just after school had started, and we conducted a, I believe it was about a six-week pilot program where no citations were issued, it was all warning period. And after the end of that warning period, we started a citation period, which ended up being the last quarter of the calendar year. And I'm trying to get to the page here. It goes on page 19. So when we went live in October of 2024, we issued 4,171 citations during that last quarter of the calendar year, and those were all speeds of 11 miles per hour or greater.
So that's a pretty incredible number. So that's a pretty incredible number considering how limited our, um, school zone speed enforcement, um, permission is from the state. So that's a pretty powerful number. And as you collect additional numbers, I know that'll be extremely useful in the legislative program going forward to the next session of the legislature, so.
You know what? I'll add to that, Mr. Snyder, if I can interrupt you real quick. We also can see that the speeds overall, the average speeds are getting less as the time goes on. So we know it's working because people are slowing down.
Okay, another great point. Thanks for that. Excellent. Um, so we did, um, I did ask the, um, I did ask for some commentary on that one letter we got on the, uh, school zone. Um, it was quite a flaming letter, to say the least. And it would appear that, uh, the city really was acting entirely within the, um, entirely within, uh, the law and our discretion under the law. So I just wanted to state for the record that, uh, we've all read that letter and the reality is that, um, we were acting appropriately.
Absolutely.
I think that's it for now. Um, I would at some point like, um, some discussion about the interaction of our police and other law enforcement agencies. But that can be, um, that can be done at a later time in another context. But I would be interested in, uh, following up on that.
Okay.
Um, but again, I want to really end where I began, which is, um, extraordinary work on the part of you, Chief, but especially on the part of each and every one of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel bad for getting the applause when we're done. I would love for our staff to stand up and they get an applause. If we're done.
Uh, we're not. We still have Mayor Hardy and me, so sorry. Mayor Hardy's been very patient with her hand up for the first, uh, five people. So Letty, your comments, please, or questions?
Sure. Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. I'm about to roll into the city. Sorry I can't be there in person, Chief Hard. So I'll echo my colleagues. We appreciate the transparency and, and the staff development focus and how evidence-based I think you continue to be and the professionalism that you bring to Falls Church and modernizing our police force. So thank you for all that work. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions. Um, I think as everyone said, the data shows that we do have mostly a good news story on, are there Group A and Group B? How do these trends compare to the regional and national picture? Are we following what's happening regionally and nationally? Are we bucking the trend? Any more insight into that? Because I think the longitudinal stuff is interesting, but I also want to be able to compare how Falls Church might look across the region and across the U.S.
Yeah, so, um, I did look at our regional data. I did not look at how we compare to, um, you know, national data. But regionally, uh, we are, um, second to the bottom in terms of Group A offenses. I'm trying to find where, where I had that. Um, so we're, we're one of the, I think last year when I reported, uh, here it is. Uh, so all crimes by city and county, so Northern Virginia, Fairfax County, Prince William, Arlington, Alexandria, Loudoun, Fairfax City, Manassas City, uh, Manassas Park City. So, um, we were the second lowest in terms of number of total Group A offenses.
And were they also trending down in those jurisdictions?
Some, uh, some. Remember the three subcategories of Group A offenses is crime against persons, crimes, uh, persons, uh, property and society. So depending on which of those subcategories you look at, um, but wholly, like completely all of it together, uh, we're doing much better than most jurisdictions. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I think nationally, the stat is actually crime is going down, common, uh, com- which is contrary to common belief. But, so it's nice to know that regionally, um, we're doing better too. Uh, second question. I recall when I read the report, um, that more than half of the calls to service related to animal control had to do with wildlife complaints?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that it was a pretty big stark jump this year. I know that in the past, council has talked about deer. Do you have any more data on what's going on there with wildlife complaints?
Yeah, I have to dig deeper to get you information on what type of wildlife. But just, uh, subjectively from listening to the radio and listening to these calls, it's mostly, um, foxes and squirrels and those kind of things. We don't really get too many deers. We might have a few deers per year. But I can, uh, dig in deeper and get you, uh, specific type of wildlife if you need that.
Right now, we don't have any plans for deer culling, although I do feel like I'm personally getting more requests, um, with nuisance deer issues. So it's just something to keep in mind and maybe we can monitor that trend.
Okay.
Uh, and then third, which, uh, we don't need to discuss, but I know is, um, something that council, I'm not the only one in council who's heard about this, is our unhoused population. I think our point in time data across the region has certainly gone up. And I know there are no easy, uh, or quick solutions to deal with this. And I know that you've personally been involved with, um, the churches as well as various neighborhoods. But the one in particular that, um, has been flagged to council is the fact that the post office remains closed. I know this was brought up in council requests, uh, a couple of months ago, and then I guess most recently. And actually, before I went out of town, I checked and the post office still remains closed. And so I, I know that we've had an officer go reach out to the postmaster, but I think that's one of those city services that people would love to see reopened. And anything we can do to help address, uh, the issue there would be helpful.
Well, I can report that our community support officer, Officer, uh, Phil Ciano, has made touch, uh, contact with the postmaster and they have reopened it. Uh, so it's been reopened for about a week, I'm told. Uh, if the community hears otherwise, please let me know. We'll, uh, reach back out for, but what I understand is it's opened back up now.
Great.
Thank you. That's it for now.
And I did, uh, Madam Mayor, I did find the sheet I was looking for, for all offense types, uh, the Group A offenses for our region. And us and Manassas Park City are the two at the bottom of the list. The next jurisdiction is three times, uh, the number of hours, uh, above us. So we're considerably lower than other agencies, uh, for our Group A offenses.
Thank you.
Traffic, thank you.
Anything else, Letty?
Nope, that's it. I'll see you shortly.
Great. Uh, just a few additional compliments and questions and comments from me. I, uh, again, also want to add to the pile of thank you and gratitude to have decreased crime and increased traffic stops, um, in a city that's growing. And we've had so much construction and so much change. Um, is really a tribute to you and all of your staff, I think. The SROs, the PSAs, the bike officers, just all the folks that are out in the community who know people by name or by sight at the very least. I think that is one of the things that people continually say makes Falls Church City still feel like a small town and a small place, even as we continue to grow. And that's the connection that many people have to the police force. So, um, thanks to everybody and, uh, on your staff for all the efforts that you make to continue making that a top priority. Um, as many have discussed, we, we love the data. Uh, can you talk a little bit about, there's a one, um, diagram of where the crashes were occurring, which I also love that report, by the way, the, that we added cr- crashes to crime so we could see when it's property and when there are injuries. And then they graphed where they're happening at that one exactly. So, you know, there's 24 in one spot. You can see that there are obviously five hotspots, if you will. How do you all, how do you work with safety engineering and with our, you know, our folks in City Hall to then turn this data into safety engineering action?
So, uh, the, the map that's shown on the bottom of page 12, that's from the state website. Um, what we do on a weekly basis is share all, all of our crash data, both reportable and non-reportable, with key, uh, stakeholders in the city. Traffic engineers, DPW, uh, city management staff, so that everybody understands the week prior where our crashes occurred, what was the cause of those crashes. There's a little bit more detailed information. And then every quarter, we compile the same set of information for the previous quarter and we share it. So it's an ongoing sharing of that data. So we all know where the crashes are happening and if we start seeing trends, we can start addressing it. Um, anytime we have a serious injury, uh, crash in the city, uh, myself and the DPW director will meet and go over that crash to see if there's any immediate actions that we need to take, whether it be engineering, enforcement or education, which are the three Es in our principles within the Vision Zero philosophies that we've talked about in the past. Uh, we share that data also publicly, uh, with the community. And, uh, we publish it on our website as well. And the state has a lot of, uh, uh, reports that came out. And incidentally, DMV just recently published their 2024 Virginia Traffic Crash Facts Report. That's on DMV's website. That provides a lot of details for our jurisdiction as well, along with trends statewide.
That's exactly the kind of information that I think it's great for us to hear, how it gets back to changing what actually is happening on the streets and preventing the next crash. So thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
I'd love to see all the increase in training. I'm glad that you're putting those, those dollars to work and people's time to work, especially, um, you know, on the de-escalation. I think many of us remember a couple of years ago when we saw the video from Sergeant Woods with the de-escal- de-escalation in real time. And, um, that's an image I know I'll never forget. And I'm incredibly grateful for those who are, who are trained in de-escalation and who do so so successfully. Um, and I know we got an update and I just can't remember where the pilot program stands with having, um, you know, social, social workers and, uh, social staff partnering with police officers to try to de-escalate specifically domestic or mental health instances to get the right people there and reduce the, the burden on the police officers. And I believe you gave us an update and I apologize, I can't remember, but somebody asked me about that recently. I didn't recall seeing it in the report.
Yeah, so, uh, um, Ms. Jones, Dana Jones, uh, Human Services Director, and I came before council. We spoke about the findings of the co-responder evaluation. Well, basically the data shows that we don't have enough, uh, calls in the city to, um, really justify a full-time position. So we did see in our, uh, evaluation, our pilot program, a lot of success with having, uh, someone that we can call outside of Fairfax CSP. Because as we know, the city contracts with CSP Mental Health Services in Fairfax County. We work very closely with them. Uh, we use our CIT program also. And we do have access to their co-responder program. But for those cases that maybe we need a little bit extra attention in the city, uh, we were using a clinician in the city. Uh, we want to try to continue that. I've been, um, speaking with our, uh, clinician about trying to continue that in a, uh, kind of an ongoing basis as we did during the pilot program. So we're still talking about that. Um, uh, the funding for the .10 FTE position is still there. So I'm hoping to use that little bit of funding to continue that, um, internal contact, that, the resources that we have internally. Uh, but if you want some data, um, because we like data, uh, in 2023, when we were doing the pilot program, we had about 86 calls in the city. And these were mental health calls, these were, uh, suicide calls, they were mostly attempt calls. Uh, last year we had 74, so we saw a little bit of decline. And this year so far, we've had about 55. So a lot of those calls are repeat, uh, offend, you know, repeat calls. So, uh, we'll continue to monitor those and work with, uh, Dana's team and Fairfax CSP to determine, you know, if at some point we get to a point that, uh, we can justify a full-time position for a full-time co-responder program.
Thank you for walking through that again. I really appreciate that and appreciate the support. And, uh, again, the training on de-escal- de-escalation and what that means, um, the positive benefit it has for our community. Um, switching to a totally different line, um, you also have all fire responsibilities underneath you as well. And there's a mention of the, I know we were adding hydrants to get up to compliance on the hydrants. Can, what's the timeframe for when that will be complete? I think it was 60 additional?
So it's a five-year CIP project?
Five years, yeah.
So we're, uh, our goal is 12 to 15 per fiscal year. Uh, I don't have the exact number in FY '25.
But you're just gonna distribute across fiscal years across that CIP timeframe?
That's right.
Okay. And that's a more manageable labor-wise to do that as well. Um, thank you again for, um, tracking the use of force. You know, we spent significant time in 2020 and with the Community Use of Force Task Force. Um, and you've really done what we all hope these task force do, which is continue to follow up and measure and show progress on that. So, um, lots of accolades. And, uh, are there any other questions or comments? Um, then I would ask if you all just rise and we'd love to give you a round of applause and gratitude. Thank you. We know many of you are out in the storms and it's going to be a difficult week this week as well, or it's predicted to be a difficult week of storms. So we thank you for keeping all of us safe, uh, to you, to DPW, to the rest of the city's staff who are on call 24/7 to make sure that we can safely pass and get home after council meetings. And more importantly, everybody else get around the city safely. So thank you again for the report and, um, we know where to find you for all the follow-up questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council requests. Are there any council requests for the manager, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, a couple non-police department related. First of all, we had some citizens mention the Leave the Leaves program and mentioned that the city could do more to, um, to sort of talk about that in city publications. I think that would be a great idea. I think an idea like this really needs to start, if I could use this term, at the grassroots, um, before it's sort of imposed from above. So I think anything to bring the science to people, um, would, um, would serve the city well on that. Second thing is, we received a letter from Steve Page, um, I think that was mentioned tonight. It came in to the, um, city clerk, I think, regarding the, um, the solid waste program and the fact that the, um, just recent tax bill increased the SALT, um, um, deduction possible and questioned why the city would move to a fee when in fact, um, the, if it were remained as a tax, that there, that would be more deductible. So, uh, that letter, um, I would be interested in, um, Andy Young taking that letter to the group and preparing a response, uh, to that letter. Um, the, um, the next issue I wanted to raise was, um, you mentioned that the, um, the roundabout construction was gonna start on Annandale and, um, Maple. Um, we at the CACT had a presentation from the Annandale community wanting more traffic calming. And I think the communications need to be, um, ramped up. And I think we need to look at traffic calming in addition to that traffic circle. Um, and I, I, I think it needs to be emphasized that the traffic circle is intended to be a safety issue and reduce, uh, traffic crashes. The evidence is there. But, um, it came up that perhaps some of the neighborhood think that all it will do will be to speed traffic into the neighborhood, make it easier to enter the neighborhood. So I think we need some, uh, communication, especially to the Annandale Road neighborhood who raise legitimate, um, traffic, um, concerns in connection, um, with that. But, but more particularly separate and apart from that, the behavior of the traffic, uh, there. Um, so those were a couple of the, um, the, the points. Um, and I applaud the fact that we have the outreach, um, um, person to the Vietnamese community. But how are we handling outreach to other minorities that live in that community, other ethnic minorities? I want to make sure that we're reaching out and that we're building bridges to them as well, as a Vietnamese community. So I may want to ask you to comment on that, uh, either now or, um, or in the future. So, um, those were the, um, I think those were the points that I wanted to follow up on, uh, tonight.
Ms. Downs?
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just two quick things. One, um, Mr. Shields, the intersection of Columbia and North Washington Street. And there, this is just to throw this out there, and I know Ms., because Ms. Hiscock lives near me. Um, there is a telephone pole that has been leaning at that intersection forever. So I don't know if that can be looked at as part of the whole, I mean, I know that's not construction, but I, I just, do you know what I'm talking, which one I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's gonna be, I assume it'd be part of that intersection redesign. We shouldn't assume.
Maybe I'll talk with you after this meeting to make sure I know which pole you're talking about.
I'll take a picture of it.
But one thing that is happening with the project, currently the signals are hanging from wires.
Yeah, so it might be part of that whole thing, yeah.
And so, uh, we'll have new masked arms and we'll stop, you know, that, that, that'll be corrected. But whether that pole gets replaced, I, I don't know, so I'll check.
I'll send you a picture. It's at the corner where the, um, on the opposite side of Columbia Baptist, where the white, I think it's a Methodist church right there. Um, but it's been leaning for a long time now, so just throw that out there. Um, and then the other thing is, if, if you wouldn't mind giving the council sort of just a brief, it, it, when Chief Farb brought it up tonight about the fire hydrants. when Chief Farr brought it up tonight about the fire hydrants, I know you know because we've had a correspondence from a community member who is upset about how it was handled that a fire hydrant might be going in front of her house, she didn't know. It was apparently supposed to go to a different house, that house complained, you know, on. Could you just follow up with us and just sort of give us just a general idea of like how the fire hydrant process works? Because I think, you know, this may not be the last time we hear from a resident who's upset about, you know, if we're going to be doing this for the next couple of years.
I can speak to it briefly tonight, and then I'll follow up with the council a little bit more. I do want to say to a couple of key points about this project. We, our staff, do, I think, a very good job of citing the hydrants in a location where we try to assess, one, where it's going to do technically the most good and also have the least impact on parking and things like that.
Right, right.
I will say that to date, we have never shifted at hydrant because of a complaint. And so, I do want to just be on the record for saying that.
Okay, thank you.
We did one, in the instance that was cited, we sent a letter in error. It was not changed because someone lobbied us.
Okay.
It was actually an error that we communicated, and then we rectified that error.
Okay.
And I state that so emphatically because it is important for people to understand that this is a necessary public safety action.
Yes.
And we have not set any precedence of sort of negotiating where they go, because we are concerned that that would be kind of an endless process. And so, I ask for the community's support in that effort. And we do everything we can to mitigate the impacts where we cite these in residential neighborhoods.
Well, thank you so much, and you know that I support the staff 100%, especially in the name of public safety. But I appreciate you clarifying that because I think there were some assumptions that were made that were not, that were incorrect. So, thank you, I appreciate that. But it might just be good for us to kind of under, you know, and I know, I think there was a communication piece that got dropped at some point in this situation, but I know that I saw some correspondence, and your staff did an excellent job trying to explain the process. So, you know, I just, it'd be great for us to maybe just have a little bit of a, or at least me, because I'm newer, a little refresher on how it works if we're going to be doing this for the next couple of years. But thank you for that context.
Mayor Hardy, you got some council requests?
I do. Good evening, everybody. Rolled in just to give council requests. Well, first of all, welcome, Matt, and I think I might have missed Lainey Wynn as well, but we appreciate all the new talent coming into the city. So, hot off the presses, Route 7 in Haycock is on flash likely due to the storms, and there's no current police or public works response out there. So, it's a little messy. Couple other things. I want to echo Mr. Snyder's comments on Leave the Leaves. I know last year, city communications and public works did step up the communications about Leave the Leaves being a great option, so I would love to see that continue this year from City Hall as well. Two quick tactical things. The walk signal at Broad and West, I received a couple complaints that the P E D timing is really fast. Like, once you step off, essentially, the timer ends. And so, there's really no safe way for someone to cross right there. Hopefully, that's just a quick fix. And also for Southwest, I know that at the beginning of the summer, there was an update to the neighborhood about voting on speed tables. That was one that I know had gotten a lot of attention because we were looking at Southwest as one of the bike routes. And so, I don't think the neighborhood has heard about where the status of that project is ever since we circled back with them that said that we were willing to do speed tables. But I know that that neighborhood has been waiting a long time, so it would be great to move that along. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. I just had one additional comment. We were participants in the Leave the Leaves last year, and with a yard that has no grass, it still was a little overwhelming. So, I wanted to make sure that our communications are leave at least as much of the leaves as possible. It's a little less snappy, but leave most of the leaves, leave lots of the leaves.
Leave some.
Leave some leaves. Whatever's left still makes an impact on all the public comments that were heard tonight. So, when we do make those, I think some people are like, oh, it's an all-or-nothing thing. Like, anything you do makes an impact on that. Okay, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess so we can rejigger up here and bring the mayor back into control of the meeting. So, it's 9:18, let's re-meet at 9:23.
The livestream is up and going?
Yeah.
Yes. Terrific. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Hiscott, for very ably running the meeting. We're ready to resume. Thank you, Mr. Shields, for the very thorough report, and Chief Farr. I think we're ready to get on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the first item, please?
Yes, and we have no second readings or other items requiring public hearings tonight. We have resolutions and first readings. And the first one is TO 25-11, Ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter 26, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Articles 1 and 3, to grant certain enforcement authority to public safety aides employed by the city's police department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll present tonight's staff report and want to say thank you to Maria Rojas, who did the lion's share of work with the police department to bring this staff report before you tonight. Before you tonight is a proposed amendment to Chapter 26 of the city code. This chapter regulates motor vehicle licensing, parking, towing, and traffic. The proposed amendment would clarify that the police department may utilize unsworn civilian personnel to perform some of the department's work under this chapter, including to enforce parking regulations, which are non-moving violations, enforce vehicle registration and licensing violations, and to direct traffic when circumstances require. Currently, while state code allows these activities to be performed by non-law enforcement officers, Chapter 26 specifically identifies that only law enforcement officers may perform these duties, and this amendment would seek to change that. Several questions were posed by council at the last meeting, and I will guide you to line 76 of the staff report where those questions, those three questions were outlined in the table there. The first was about, a question about training, what kind of training do public safety aides receive to perform the duties of uniformed school crossing guards? And that response is that they receive department training to support this role, and the training aligns with VDOT standards and covers topics such as pedestrian safety and traffic direction protocols. That necessary training is integrated into their departmental programs, and they do have a budget to support that training. The other second question was, are PSAs trained to use radios and communicate with dispatch? And the answer is yes. They are issued radios and trained on how to use them for that purpose. And then third, can public safety aides aid in the enforcement of snow removal? The answer is not as clear, but I will say that our practice, the police practice, is not to use public safety aides in that capacity. Snow removal is authorized as a, under state code, as a public nuisance removal, and the way the state code authorizes that to be enforced is through the imposition of fines, which then are collected in the same way that real estate taxes can be collected. So, if the fine remains unpaid, a lien, and the city performs the work, a lien can be placed on the property. So, I guess the question, the answer is no, they would not have a role except to perform the public service role of reminding people of the obligation to remove the snow. Then lastly, we added one line, as mentioned in the work session, to the ordinance at line number 169 of your staff report. You'll see a sentence added that says, "Law enforcement officers may enforce all provisions of this chapter," which was added to, in front of the sentence that says, "Public safety aides may do so." And finally, on, at the dais before you tonight was an amendment number one, which is, I'm sorry, different subject matter. That was the last thing. So, I will take any questions, and I believe, well, I think the police have left, so it's just us. I can answer any questions for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the follow-up since our work session. Who's got comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
I just had a quick comment. I know we discussed like what the appropriate, you know, actions for civilians to be, and I just, after our discussion with the chief today, who said that our red light and cameras shouldn't be done by non-officer positions. I think that just reinforces to me that he and the police staff have put a lot of time and thought into what should and shouldn't be done by uniformed officers versus non-uniforms. So, if there aren't any other comments, I will make a motion, but...
I don't see anything. I think we are ready for a motion.
Great. Move to grant first reading to TO 25-11 and to schedule a public hearing, and second reading for August 11, 2025.
Do we have a second? Second. Ms. Conley on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Call the second item, please.
Yes, we have TO 25-10, Ordinance to vacate a 4,133-square-foot portion of a plat that established the sidewalk location at 111 East Broad Street. Terminate the public sidewalk easement associated with the vacated sidewalk. Approve a revised plat establishing a 4,092-square-foot relocated sidewalk location at 111 East Broad Street, and accept a public sidewalk easement over the relocated sidewalk.
Welcome, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Gary Fuller, Planning Department. Tonight, before you is a request using an ordinance to adjust the sidewalk location that's at Broad and Washington, and it's the new mixed-use project that's open there. And so, the perimeter of the building with the brick facade encroached slightly during the full length of the project. And so, while the encroachment is, you know, less than an inch, when you add up the linear number, it's 41 square feet net, and that's in terms of property adjustment in the favor of the developer versus the city. But anyway, so the process to adjust this sidewalk is to vacate the city's property interest in the current sidewalk location and then approve a new revised plat that would then reinstate that easement to the city. And so, this was the subject of a July 7 work session in which we worked through it. And there were several questions that were generated at the time, and so, staff looked into, first question, which was to ensure that the 20-foot street scape clear is maintained there, and we were able to verify that the 20-foot street scape is maintained for the perimeter of the project. Secondly, to confirm how much square foot area is being changed with the easement. And on Washington Street, it was adding 3 square feet, and then on East Broad Street, it was subtracting 44 square feet, which, you know, nets the 41, and that was less than 1/10 of a percent change. And so, that was very minor. It's a .02 total percentage change. So, the third question was a valuation of that 41 square feet. If you apply a $20 a square foot value, it's about $820. Staff has not recommended any particular financial compensation in this, in that the subdivision plat fee exceeds that amount. It's more like $3,000 just for the application to, you know, correct this easement and to adjust it accordingly to the building as built. And so, anyway, tonight, it's before you for referral to the Planning Commission after granting first reading. They'll advise on that, and then it's scheduled to come back before you on August 11. They'll advise on that, and then it's scheduled to come back before you on August 11. So I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the follow-up since our work sessions. I think I'd asked for the information around exactly what the percentage was, and I think that's pretty telling, that it's a .02% change in sidewalk, as well as the change to the 20-foot sidewalk, which ultimately is the policy question, I think, at hand for council up here. So I know that we had that public comment earlier about impacting sidewalks. And while this is a council that very much cares about pedestrian impacts and safety, I think, given the very minuscule impact in this case, I personally am not interested in pursuing a financial compensation from the application, but would welcome comments from the rest of council. Ms. Downs?
I will say that the applicant's attorney is online, Matt Weinstein, so he's also available to address any of these issues.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Ms. Downs?
Yes, thank you. And again, we did have a public comment about this this evening, and I do think the work session was really good. I remember Ms. Underhill did dig into these, as I recall, a lot, had a lot of questions about this. So I think we did have quite a few questions, and we didn't just let it go. And I appreciate the follow-up answering those questions. You know, I was just curious, you know, I think our speaker tonight talked about, you know, not setting a precedent, you know? It could be a slippery slope. We let this developer do this, and, you know, but I think on the opposite end, we had the development of Madera Falls Church, and the city held that developer accountable for redoing all that grading and everything. I was just curious, how, was this just sort of an oversight on the city's part in terms of, you know, I'm, I understand it's a small amount, but I was just curious, is this something that we just, by the time it was realized, it was too late? Or if you had any insight on that?
I mean, I'll let the engineering firm address that, but basically, you know, the building footprint with the brick exceeded the footprint on the approved site plan, and so we're adjusting for that. And so it really is, it's kind of as simple as that, but, and so we're just correcting that after the fact and looking at the plats, and the engineers brought that up, you know, voluntarily and said, hey, this is slightly off, we need to make this adjustment. So they came to us on that, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Others?
And just to confirm, when you say they, the insight property, their engineers came to the city?
Their engineers, Boulder Engineering, and then their attorney. So they wanted to, you know, make sure this was recorded correctly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Conley?
This is about our 15th mixed-use building, maybe 12?
About, yes.
Yeah.
Been about 17, 18 years.
Has this ever happened before?
I know on, there was a slight height issue with the Byron. It was less than a foot, and so there had to be adjustments made to that, and it was checked at the end. So, no, this is, this is not a common error, but, you know, occasionally, you know, mistakes are made, and this is very minor, and obviously, you want to record something in final form. And so when you look at what as-built, we call it, what was built versus what was approved on the plan, there was a very slight variation here, and so you want it correct when you go final on it, so.
But every building has as-built afterwards
Yes, and there's...
To true up what is built with what was approved.
That is absolutely correct. And then, you know, sometimes due to final engineering, we make adjustments in the field. You might have to build a retaining wall due to the slope, and it wasn't quite calculated. And so, but when it, when it becomes more substantial, then we'll actually do a site plan amendment to the original site plan, clean that up. We've done that on a couple projects where they identified it in advance, and so we took it back to Planning Commission, made those adjustments accordingly. And in this case, you know, it's just a matter of, you want to record it
Right.
In the correct form in the land records.
Definitely. So just to address Ms. McDowell's fear of a slippery slope, is there a plus minus where had this been 75 square feet, then it would have been a problem? Is there a range? I mean, .02% is very tiny.
Yeah.
Is .07% not very, or is it really a judgment call?
I mean, at this point, it's so insignificant, and it simply was a mistake in terms of the final, and so the threshold would be much higher, where we would really be worried about an issue, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Fuller.
Sure.
Ms. Underhill?
So with this 41 square feet, does this change at all property taxation or how that's calculated?
I mean, in terms of it's 41 square feet less than that we have to tax, yes. So, because it is city land, it's a net loss to us of 41 square feet. Because of the, you know, the size of the project, the linear nature, even a half-inch when calculated in hundreds of feet, so.
But would, I guess in terms of the insight property now, it's 41 square feet more, so then would we be collecting 41 square feet more property tax on that building?
I mean, we have an easement, you know, which is what we're dealing with here, so that's encumbrance on it. But yeah, there's 41 more square feet that they own, so technically, they'd be paying a little more taxes, yes.
Okay, okay, so in some ways, we are getting a little bit compensated potentially.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, could I just jump in real fast?
Sure.
Just to clarify real fast, if this is an easement, it's, the property is owned by insight, it's an easement conveyed to the city, so there's no loss of property rights.
Okay.
Other than losing 41 square feet of the easement area.
Right, oh, right, okay, so this is not, this is, this property is insight's property. The easement is a city easement.
That's correct.
And so it's simply 41 square feet of the easement, but this is already part of insight's property. Okay, so with that, I mean, what I deeply care about is making sure that the sidewalk is as wide as we want it to be, which was the 20-feet width.
Yes.
And if we basically maintain the 20-foot width, which gives people ability to push strollers and walk side by side and walk a bicycle or whatever else on the sidewalk, then that's what I care about, and as long as we're basically maintaining that, then I'm, I'm fine with, with this.
To confirm, it's 20-foot setback with a 10-foot clear sidewalk, I think, is our standard?
Yes, yeah.
So, so 30 feet?
The 10 is inclusive than 20, so 20, the building face a curb is 20 feet, that's our adopted standard on Broad and Washington. And then there's a 10-feet clear sidewalk, I think, as part of that 20.
Within that, yeah. And so there was, we did a field check last week, staff did the benchmarks.
Final questions? Mr. Snyder?
Let me go to line 15 in the staff report, because the discussion that we just had seems inconsistent with that. Said that the sidewalk adjustment results in a net loss of sidewalk area equal to 41 square feet. So are we losing an easement? Are we losing sidewalk? What, what's actually happening here?
It's actually the easement area that was just described by the attorney for the applicant.
So...
Yeah, it says sidewalk easement.
So are we losing actual area that people walk on? Or are we, are we giving up the ability to use sidewalk there for city purposes in the future?
So it's a reduced amount of the use area as part of the easement.
Okay, so it's, it's actually, contrary to the prior discussion, we're actually losing 41 square feet of walkable sidewalk. Is that what's happening here?
Of easement, yeah, walkable sidewalk, yes.
And just to, as we discussed at the work session, that's over thousands of linear feet, so it is an inch?
No, I know the comparison, I'm just trying to figure out what the actual situation is here. You could give up an easement, but wouldn't have any effect on the sidewalk, because the easement would be for the city's use of that potentially in the future. That's not what's happening here. We apparently lost sidewalk. I'm just trying to clarify things so that the public has a clear...
There are stretches along the way where we've lost, I think, the widest part is about three inches of sidewalk. It is, and has been, the staff's assessment that this is not noticeable. From the experience on the street, you can't tell. And so we're viewing this as a technical matter and asking council to do first reading on this.
I understand how you're viewing it, I'm just trying to figure out, so that the public understands what the fundamental issue is here, that there's a loss of some walkable space, 41 square feet, although there's much more walkable space that was included in this project. Right, okay, thank you.
And over the course of thousands of linear feet, it's an inch here. So I ran it and walked the entire thing and held up my little map. I think it's mainly where the brick articulates out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the building facade, if you walk down Whole Foods and the length of the Broad and Washington building, has brick articulation in the architecture. I don't, I think that's an inch here, an inch there, and that's why it results in 41 square feet. The walkable pedestrian space is not impacted beyond, obviously adding up, 41 seems significant, but I would encourage people to walk and experience the sidewalk, which is nice and wide. Any other final comments or questions? And I have a motion?
Move to grant first reading and to refer TO 25-10 to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation to the city council. Schedule second reading and public hearing for August 11, 2025, and advertise the same according to law.
Second?
A second.
Ms. Underhill on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Stay in.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you, council.
Call the third item, please. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Are we ready for the next item?
We are, thank you.
Yes, we have TO 25-12, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1321 to increase the salaries for the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church.
Welcome, Mr. Hallen.
Good evening, Mayor Hardy, members of council. I'll keep it brief tonight, as we discussed this last week, too, but tonight, council has requested a grants, grant first reading to an ordinance to increase the salaries for the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church. Just for a little bit of background, on April 24, 2025, the Planning Commission Chair Andrea Coman sent a memorandum to city council requesting that council consider an increase in the compensation provided to the Planning Commission members. Virginia code allows local governing bodies to provide appropriate compensation for commission members. The city council last adjusted Planning Commission member compensation in 1990 at a rate of $100 per month, and for the chair, $150 per month. At the July 7, 2025 work session, the city council discussed, suggested methodologies for compensating members of the Planning Commission. It was the consensus of the council during that work session that the proposed increase would raise salaries for the Planning Commission members from 100 per month to $250 per month, and for the Planning Commission chair, 150 per month to 300 per month. That would be in line with similar jurisdictions in the area. In addition to that proposed adjustment, council also requested that the ordinance reflect that Planning Commission salaries shall be reviewed every five years, with the next review after this ordinance to occur in 2030. Lastly, the proposal would increase Planning Commission total compensation from $9,000 a year to $21,600 per year. That's it for the staff report.
Great. Questions or comments since we last discussed? I think that seemed like a decent compromise between the options that were proposed, so thank you for bringing that back. No more questions or comments? We'll take a motion.
I'll move to adopt TR 25-17.
Second? Downs on the second.
Oh, this is an ordinance, is that not correct? Oh, there's a motion, this is an ordinance that requires a public hearing.
The one that, can you read the one that's up?
I move to grant first reading to TO 25-12, schedule second reading and public hearing for August 11, 2025, and advertise the same according to law.
Second. Downs on the new motion, seconded. Thank you for the catch. Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
And to confirm the timing on this, I think we talked about doing a budget amendment in the fall, where we would adjust this so that the new salaries would go into effect after that.
Well, the ordinance calls for it to be effective September 1, and so the effective date actually is before the budget amendment. The budget amendment probably would get second reading by the end of October, so I want the council to just be aware of that disconnect. If the council is not comfortable with that, the effective date could be, I think, safely November 1. But we were thinking, just the dollar amounts being what they are, really, the effective date, I would say, is up to the discretion of the council.
Okay. I more care about just communicating to the Planning Commission that we are responsive to this and when they can expect the change, and so if we could just work out when, assuming this passes second reading, when that might be. If planning staff could communicate with the Planning Commission, that would be terrific. Thank you. Let's move on to the fourth item, please.
Yes, we have TR 25-17, Resolution to Initiate Amendments to the Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter 2, Administration, Six Buildings, Fifteen Fees, Thirty-Eight Subdivision, and Forty-Eight Zoning, in order to reflect July 1, 2025, Virginia State Code changes regarding, A, removal of site plan approval authority from the Planning Commission and assigning it to the designated agent, and B, the maximum review time of site plan subdivision plats and plans of development solely involving parcels of commercial or residential real estate.
Thank you, Gary Fuller, again, from Planning Department. This was the subject of a work session on June 2, and then there was a parallel action on June 16, where the council passed a resolution that designates the planning director as the city's designated agent for site plan approvals. This is initiating resolution and requesting and directing staff to develop amendments in the city code that would reflect the recent changes in the Virginia State Code that took effect July 1, and in terms of localities, how they review and approve site plans and subdivision plan applications. And so this initiating resolution would direct staff to prepare those code amendments in the zoning code for formal consideration and before you in September. So, thank you.
Do we have questions or comments on this one? Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot. You know, I support moving forward on this. I wonder if a friendly amendment could be, and direct the council legislative committee to prepare amendments that will give the public and the Planning Commission more authority. I would make that motion, in addition to moving to adopt TR 25-17, also direct the legislative committee of the council to prepare and advocate for amendments to the state code that would provide for greater public and Planning Commission input.
I'd second as amended.
Yeah, I mean, I think that is something that, and just sort of getting the, my finger in the pulse of what the community feels about this, is that we're losing an important part of public feedback, you know, and obviously, this is something that's coming out of Richmond. And I don't know, Ms. Mester, if you can speak to this, and I apologize, you probably already went through this, but was this just supposed to be Richmond's way to speed up the process of some, you know, planning?
Yeah, I believe that was the senator's intent on this one. It was to expedite land use and approval because the locality regulations were slowing it down. And this council can do this as a broad legislative for state code in general, or we could consider it under the charter, since part of the charter already supersedes the subdivision piece, but it didn't address the site plan, so we could try to marry the charter up. So there's some strategic options if council wants to pursue it when we deliver the full legislative program development.
I think I have two questions in response to that. I think when we last discussed in work session, one of the ideas that was floated is, could the Planning Commission have a work session and provide advisory comments to the planning director? So while not binding, the planning director could take it under advisement. Have you all talked about the practicality of that?
Yes, we're in the process of addressing that. We've asked the city attorney for an opinion on that through Henry on my staff last week, and so we're looking into... and so we're looking into that so we can implement something in an interim basis. And so that is our objective as the Planning Division going forward.
Or even not on an interim, even once we've adopted the new state code, couldn't the Planning Commission still be advisory on site plans?
Well, it, yeah, it could be before or after. So we're looking at the feasibility of whether we need to wait until you adopt this legislation or whether we could start it on an interim basis, and so we're looking at both options.
Got it.
And I would just add that there's nothing that prohibits the Planning Commission from advising the staff, and so the question, but clearly, the Planning Commission has been excised from this process, and so the line to walk, in my opinion, is if you were going to undertake a process like that would be to, I think you would have to ensure that the advice given by the Planning Commission does not materially influence kind of the decisions that are made by the staff in terms of, in terms of, you know, how they act on the plan that's before them.
And is there anything that would prevent the Planning Commission from opening up to public comment as part of that process when they're giving advisory recommendations to the planning director?
Again, that is not prohibited, but it would not be allowed to influence how interpretations are made at the staff level.
Okay. And then the second thing I remember discussing in work session is some sort of monitoring process, because I understand the legislative intent of why this was done in Richmond, and I think my suggestion was we should monitor whether this actually backfires, right? So if we are rushed through the site plan process because we can't have thorough public comment, we don't have planning commission discussion, and we end up having to reject site plans, which has the opposite effect of actually getting more projects through, then clearly Richmond would need to know that. Do we have monitoring processes, or will we have monitoring process set up so that we at least can have that feedback loop with?
Yes, I've conveyed that to staff, and we're finalizing the procedures right now, and that's part of that. We will be tracking that. We've had, we've got one leftover jewelry store that will be dealing with, the planning director will be, and we'll be doing a full report for him, and we've had one pre-application for a small commercial project, so we've discussed it with them. So at this point, we're looking to monitor all of those, and the other thing is to have, part of that process would be pre-meetings with applicants, and so once they submit, then the clock does start, but I think the pre-meetings would give them a lot of good information and be more complete in their first submission. So that's, we're going to emphasize that front end. And then, you know, as we've discussed before, we'll be looking at some other parallel aspects, the Planning Commission's involvement, waiver criteria, and then cleaning up the code to match up with what the state legislation has done, so.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, so I think I'm fine with the amendment to kind of advocate for something different. I would just encourage us to be open-minded about this change, monitor how it goes, and not just automatically put up the knee-jerk reaction of, oh, my God, we don't like this change, because it is a change in our process. That said, I think site plans are handled differently across, actually, Northern Virginia already, and so I think that might be the other thing that would be pretty informative for us. For example, I know Fairfax City already has administrative approval of site plans. Arlington does it a little different, Fairfax County also as well, so I think everyone actually does not have Planning Commissions involved in the site plan or subdivision process. So I think it'd be informative for council to be aware of how it's done regionally before we react and say, we don't like this.
Yes, it does vary, and we've done the research already. As part of, when we looked at the salary comparisons, we also looked at this aspect, and so we've gathered that data preliminarily, and we have contacts now to follow up, so.
Terrific. Thank you for all the work on this.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion, sorry?
I guess, you know, when we originally were talking about this, one of the downsides that came up was that, you know, there isn't sort of a notice requirement anymore because there's no sort of public hearing or commission involvement, so the public wouldn't necessarily know if a site plan is under administrative review, and so I guess, you know, in thinking sort of what the internal operating, like, procedures of sorts will be, you know, you often include, like, the very helpful director's report in the Planning Commission agenda, and I just, you know, as sort of the supplemental materials at the end of the agenda, and I do just wonder, like, if something could be developed that would be helpful for the public to at least have insight into, like, projects that are coming before or pending before the planning department, whether it's like an agenda item of, you know, submitted site plans, so that if people do want to monitor that and come and provide public comment, regardless of whether the applicant to staff now takes advantage of wanting to appear before the commission in a pre-submission capacity to get the benefit of their views, or if the timing of a meeting works out in terms of sort of staff review, that there's like a line item that's now on the agenda to capture in some sort of way when people would want to potentially reach out to staff to the extent that they have, you know, any input they want to share for your, like, review of the site plan. So just a consideration.
I like the line item, you know, like apparel tracking on the PC agenda where, you know, people are looking already. To address your earlier comments, we do still do the notice, so the legal notice will still be done. It's always been done whether it was administered previously or the Planning Commission was involved. That involves a letter that goes out to all adjacent properties within 150 feet. Secondly, we've done, as a courtesy, it's not code required, we've printed up real estate yard signs, and so we post those at the first work session of the Planning Commission, and then so throughout the entire review process, people are aware from the yard signs that this property is under some type of consideration, either be in subdivision or site plan. We will do that at the first week of application. We will post that, let them know that it's under administrative review by the planning director, and so those yard signs will go up in the first week of the application, and so it will be conspicuous, and while it's not a code requirement, that's, you know, that's our plan already built into our procedures. So we'll have both that notice, and then we'll have the yard signs up, and so I like the idea of, you know, a little kind of note column on the agenda where people are looking for other things, and so we'll take that under advisement as we're finalizing our notice requirements, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? I think we had an amendment, but no motion yet. If I?
I think that was a motion.
I moved, I want to repeat it back, city.
No, I got, I got it. I did get it. I just didn't know if there was a second.
I had seconded.
I think it was Flynn on the second. I heard Mr. Snyder's amendment to it to advocate to legislate.
Right, that was in addition to the motion?
Okay.
And so there was a second?
I seconded as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you for your support and your ideas on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the consent package. Anyone like anything removed from consent? We've got an assortment of NVTA grant applications, compensation resolutions for our three employees, appointments, among other things.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, I did make an amendment to the, one of the consent agenda items, and that amendment was left on the dais for each council member, and I would like to pull that item off the consent.
Which item was that?
It is.
It's 10C6, I believe?
Yes, 10C6, I guess, one, I think 1, 2, 3, and 4 are all one item. Is that, is that correct? They have the, I think 2, 3, and 4 might be attachments. Let me.
What?
Yeah. Yes, so it would be 10, correct, so it's 10, I already lost my page, I'm sorry.
I can read it for you if you, 10C6 is authorization for the city manager to sign amendment number one to the current memorandum of agreement, MOA 20111074, between Fairfax County and the City of Falls Church.
Okay. So we're pulling that one off, so minus that one. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Everyone's had a chance to review. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Conley, second?
Second.
Downs on the second? Call roll, please.
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Let's now discuss 10C6.
Thank you. 10C6 has really not changed since you saw it at work session, except in this one regard, which is in the course of merging the, this item merges the Public Health Agreement with the Family and Social Services Agreement, pulling the health contents under Family Services. However, there is an existing invalid health contract that should also be terminated at the same time, otherwise we'd have two health contracts running. So what this red line does that was at the dais terminates the existing public health contract at the same time as that health contract becomes effective under the Family Services contract.
Okay. Questions on that? Vice Mayor?
And just to confirm, this contract is a one-year contract?
Correct. It is kind of a one-year Band-Aid. The health, public health contract, the Fairfax, let me start over. The attorney for Fairfax, her preference is that these standalone MOUs get brought under into a comprehensive agreement, and I agree with that. It's easier to track our obligations to each other that way. And there is, the health agreement that's being terminated is just an annual automatic renewing contract, and, and so, and the one it's being brought into expires in 2026 in one year. So in one year, we will need to have a new, brand-new approval of this combined contract. And over the course of that next year, this next year, I heard the council ask for some data analysis so the council could understand what services are being provided under these combined contracts, and we will be prepared to do that.
Great, yeah. Ms. Lewis mentioned, you know, that the dollar amount spent in each of these contracts were in the budget book, and it'd be great to see a number of people provided which types of service, so we know, you know, whether we're, whether we're negotiating this contract the best for our residents and the needs that we have here, so if we could just make sure that each just department has this on their docket for, you know, six months out or so from now to make sure that this gets navigated, negotiated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Do we have a motion for this?
Move to authorize the city manager to sign amendment number one to the current memorandum of agreement, MOA 20111074, between Fairfax County and the City of Falls Church.
Second. Second. Downs on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Any other business on the agenda? We've got a little two-week mini-recess. We won't be back August 4, otherwise. Standing committee, regional council liaison reports? Mr. Snyder?
Just one quick note, Madam Mayor. The Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, at its last meeting, approved the regional bus rapid transit plan. I know that council member Justine Underhill also participated in that decision-making process. What it means is that Route 7 BRT, as well as other BRT programs, will now be eligible for funding in the future, and I think it's a significant improvement in public transit in the region, is being made possible with this. Of course, it's how we implement it, but that was a fundamental first step. Thank you.
It's good news for the region, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just wanted to quickly report back from the NVRC meeting that I attended when Letty was at the, I believe, VML board meeting. There was a discussion about an October housing session, bringing the region together to talk about what is an issue across all the jurisdictions that were gathered, talking about how it impacts retaining the brain trust of Northern Virginia and retaining population and workers, and how that impacts economic development. So that'll be in October, and we'll, I'm sure, get more information about that between now and then.
I guess I would just add with the continued, you know, reductions in force and the changes to benefits eligibility, to request that HHS is, you know, paying attention to all of that and reporting back is necessary for any trends and increased need that they're seeing and aware of in the community, so I would appreciate that.
Did about, I think, know that we had put aside the safety net contingency in the last budget, and I guess before we tackle another budget amendment, it'd be good to know whether we're starting to pull that contingency, so we know whether usage is ramping up, so we can adjust as needed in the fall in the next budget amendment. Other things? I had one quick thing. This is an idea that we had raised and then backburnered years ago now, maybe two years ago, but the idea of giving bus passes, Mr. Snyder's comments about the regional BRT reminded me about this. Neighboring jurisdictions have a program where they offer free metro rides, bus pass rides, for students in middle and high school, and so the idea was whether we would offer the same to our students, because the 28A or now the F30, F20, runs the length of Route 7 and could be a nice complement to the late bus program that's offered by the secondary schools. It would not only help boost ridership, but also teach our kids more independence and use of public transit early on. I think the school board was supportive of this, and I think Mary Beth had done some really great research of how Arlington and Fairfax had implemented this. I think in Arlington, it's about a $300,000 annual budget cost. They obviously have 10 times the number of students as we do, and so if we were to scale that down, it's probably about a $30,000 pilot if we were to pursue something similar and scale up. They also have many more bus routes. We really just have the one that runs up and down seven. So something that I think several of us have expressed interest in, I think the schools are also supportive, and so if this is an idea that we want to pursue, it'd be great to get a pilot going before the school year. So I mention it out for awareness.
And Mary Beth and I were on a meeting with the Fairfax County, this was probably two years ago now, and they have the whole program already, you know, co-branded with Metro, so it's not recreating communications and marketing, and this is how you do it, and this is the process and procedure. It really was kind of a, you know, we would love for you to do it, so here's the program and the process type of approach, but Mary Beth can comment more.
Yeah, it was a very interesting process. It was, both Arlington and Fairfax are also utilizing their own local bus routes with ART and with Fairfax Connector. For, both of them, there's a, well, for the Fairfax one, there was a larger upfront cost. There could be a way to piggyback along with it. Because we only have the one bus route, it's tricky, both of those, the other two are, you can ride on the buses within your jurisdiction. We would, that, be able to go back and forth. So we would really need to look at that. All of those programs are administered through the county Department of Transportation, and then the schools jump on those, but it's a county program that the schools are participating in, not a school-run program. I think there are some ways we could probably do it. It would be interesting to survey the students and parents to see how much interest there is in doing it and how we would qualify and all that kind of thing, so there are definitely some pieces that would need to be organized, but it'd be worth it to take a look.
I had done an initial conversation with the former COO around that research, and how could we partner, because we don't have a Department of Transportation to run it. They had large quantity of discount cards you had to buy, so I think we would need to partner with one of our larger localities, and then staff changes have happened, so we could put it back in, and also, when I last heard about it, the school board was supportive and willing to pay for the initial pilot, but we need to make sure that if it works and we want to sustain it, we have a fiscal analysis.
It's a great topic from our meeting with the new superintendent. Great, thank you for the input. Any other comments, I'd welcome them, but it's been an interesting idea that I think we've talked about, and would be a great partnership opportunity.
Yeah, I would just, you know, if we have the money, if we can figure out the money piece, as someone who lives on the other end and having, you know, lots of kids in sports at the secondary campus, I think it would be terrific if we could figure it out.
I think part of our challenge, and we can work it through, is our bus route doesn't go into the residential, so in the larger counties, when you have connector queue, you have more connections, so we got to get kids to the bus stop in there. But I have heard some very creative kids that pick up East Falls Church Metro and get off at West Falls Church Metro and. off at West Falls Church Metro and don't actually get on the school bus routes. It's faster they report.
Okay. Thank you.
I would also just plus one it, too.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Okay, we have two batches of minutes, January 27th and February 10th. Do anyone have comments, or did anyone review them?
I did review them.
Thank you.
I don't have comments on either of them. Well done, is my comment. Well done. So I would move to approve the minutes of January 27th, 2025.
I'll second, having read them, too.
Flynn on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He knows. Eyes have it.
And also the minutes of February 10th, 2025, to be approved. Second.
It's Flynn, also in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Ms. Flynn, Ms. Conley. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Good night, all. Enjoy the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.